And it's been the source of a lot of pride for our community as well as a lot of fun. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Congratulations, students.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Brian.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
Our next presentation will be by Roger Snowball, who is the head of the Metropolitan Transit Authority, and also with him is Doug Failing, our district director from Caltrans, and Mark Pisano from the executive director of the Southern California Association of Governments. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming, and if you'd like to step up and give us your presentation, this is regarding the Interstate 710 tunnel concept.
Yes, so, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. Thank you for having some time on your agenda for us to talk a little bit to you about this project and anything else that might be on your mind today. We're not in as good mood here lately as maybe we would have been a year ago because of the kinds of budget cuts that we've been seeing at the state level, and certainly they've been pretty staggering, and also the federal level has not been all that great. So, our mood is a little bit more somber, and things are a little bit more difficult to do, but the three of us work together on a regular basis, and our collective responsibilities are to keep Los Angeles County and beyond moving, which is quite a challenge, given the fact that it's a very large county, and resources are very slim, and there's already tremendous congestion everywhere. But specifically, we wanted to talk a little bit about one of the longer-term projects that's been on the books in the Los Angeles County area for, I guess, forty years. There are generations who have grown up around the 710 gap closure issue. This is, we believe, the last interstate gap in the country that still exists, and so it's obviously something that there are a great many people interested in seeing completed, a great many people interested in making sure that it's completed in a way that won't be as disruptive as the plans currently show, that it would be through doing a cut-and-cover type of approach. And so, we have been looking at this for a considerable amount of time now, and we also have knowledge that there are new techniques that have developed in the last ten years, primarily, and primarily in European and Asian countries, where instead of doing deep cut-and-covers, many locations now are going to board tunnels. And so, at MTA, we do have tunnel experts, and we asked them to take a look at this particular area and see if there were reasons beyond cost that would prohibit us from being able to do twin highway tunnels to complete this gap. Our people came back, our experts came back, and these are people that work on tunnels around the world, and said that there are no significant geological reasons why this tunnel couldn't be built. It can be done with modern technology fairly easily. There are no water issues that are, as a result of this, it would cross one fault line, and our experts believe that that fault line can be mitigated, so that that's really not even a problem. And also, the costs are not all that much greater than the old proposal. And so, we thought that this may not be a bad way to take a look at this, because it would save an awful lot of homes by doing a board tunnel as opposed to doing a cut-and-cover. And so, if we're going to complete this project, it might make us a more sensible way for going about doing such a thing. Now, we have been, we've done some preliminary work on it. MTA staff has done preliminary work in conjunction with Caltrans, and we do think it is a very doable kind of thing, that we could actually build this in a way that would save somewhere in the neighborhood of sixteen hundred homes that would not have to be destroyed to be able to accomplish this. One of the unique features that this is really a huge project to the air quality plan of our area, of course, here again, we were in a much more optimistic view of our air quality plan before we lost all this funding, and Mark will talk a little bit about that. But one of our biggest projects in the region is the 710 gap closure for achieving air quality. If we go to a tunnel, there's even an added benefit, because all the emissions that are actually emitted inside the tunnel can be cleaned under modern technology before that air is released back into the atmosphere. So, there would actually be no emissions coming out of any vehicle that was going through the tunnel, so it was even a bigger air quality savings. So, we're just out talking to people to see if there is an interest in it. If there was interest in it, then we were going to see if we could work out some agreements with the cities involved, and the neighborhood groups involved, and all the different agencies involved, to see if there was a way that we could get Caltrans to take a look at this proposal, and that maybe it would be something that we could go forward with. Like I say, things are slowing down a little bit because of the state funding issue. However, if we could do this in such a way that we could maybe look at allowing trucks on it and actually making it an interstate highway, that we could get substantial federal funding to do it, ninety percent federal funding. So, that's something that perhaps still could be done. There's just an awful lot of work that would have to be put into it beforehand to replace the old environmental study with the new rod. So, we're just out talking to people about how that would affect their communities, what kinds of things we should be looking out for, and how we would handle it. One of the issues we realized from the very beginning when we started talking about this, that the completion of the gap would certainly have an effect on traffic in this area, and therefore, we already figured that as we define this project, as we go forward, it would have this long section through your community as well to at least include sound walls as part of the project, so that we would do that, we'd have to go quite a bit farther than just the gap closure in defining the project, both to the north and to the south. But we already figured that that would be something that we would want to do and complete as part of the project and get federal money to do it. So, that's really what we're talking about. As an introduction, I'll ask Doug to, well, let's go to Mark, because he can really bring us up to date on what's going on with the regional plan, and the challenges we face in the regional plan, and how this would all fit in together with the regional plan.
Thank you very much, Roger. Mayor Curcio and other, and members of the council, it's a pleasure to be before you to discuss one of the more significant projects of regional significance that's uncomplete and we need to sort out and finish. I also would like to note that we have, from your council, members who serve on various committees. Councilmember Spence is a member of our Transportation and Communication Committee, and is responsible for steering the development of our regional transportation plan that is under review and is out for public comment and to be finalized in April of next year. A key element of that plan is our growth visioning, primarily the growth patterns in the region, and how we can change growth patterns so that we take better advantage and optimize the scarce transportation facilities that we now have. And as Roger pointed out, given the budgetary constraints at the state level and also at the federal level, it's putting increased pressure on us as a region to more effectively and efficiently use our transportation system to move people and goods and to build our communities. And Mayor Protem Olaso has been a member of that growth visioning committee and has brought forth recommendations that will have significant impacts in how this region grows and develops and uses transportation resources. So, we thank the city for sending delegates that have not only represented this jurisdiction well, but are helping the region to sort out some fairly significant dilemmas. We have a fair amount of growth in this region, a lot more anticipated, there's increased congestion, and we need to resolve that congestion as we grow, and that's the purpose behind the plan. We also have a very severe air quality condition, and our organization has provided the land use and transportation input to the air quality district, as they have just finalized a new air quality plan for this basin. And I want to note that the amount of emission reductions coming from transportation projects in our plans are almost equivalent to the amount of controls that the district is able to gain through stationary sources. These emission sources from land use and transportation are now becoming important. I do want to note that the technology reductions by the federal government and the state are still the overwhelming levels of emission reductions that we need, specifically as it relates to the 710. This project is now going into its fourth decade of conflict within the region. Because it's a gap in a system that has freeways feeding into it and freeways at the other end, it now is one of the most difficult congestion and air quality emission generating activities within our region. The amount of congestion that is caused in this portion of the region is large because we have this system gap. It's also one of the most disruptive in terms of community and housing impacts, as Roger pointed out, and we have struggled over the last, since the last plan, and the record of decision on the 710. We were directed by the then-director of FHWA to come up with a review and, if possible, ways to resolve the issue without having the disruption. And for that reason, the idea of the tunnel is on the table. We believe that it technically and financially can be made to work. We also are communicating with all of the jurisdictions immediately impacted and adjacent to work with them to find ways in which we can resolve the conflicts, the immediate conflicts and the related conflicts, so that we can finish this project. And furthermore, if we can come to agreement, there is the possibility of this region obtaining funds from Washington that are not counted off of our allocation. That's not, in order for us to do that, we're going to need to have the agreements of all of the various parties. For that reason, we've approached all of the affected jurisdictions, noting that if they are open to the idea and are willing to work with us, that we'll pursue with the state and federal agencies. That is, the regional agencies will work with the state and federal agencies to see if we can't further this idea, including the mitigation of impacts that are beyond the immediate tunnel. And I want to reinforce what Roger noted. There are strategies both to mitigate, and furthermore, there are strategies within the region so that we can mobilize the movement of goods and trucks and routes other than those that would go through these communities. Let me just stop with that, and before I turn it over to Doug Failing, we've also been working with the Assemblywoman from this area, Carol Liu, in approaching the communities. She's reinforced the need to find mitigation for all of the community impacts to move this project forward, but has also been willing to help us make contact and communication with the various jurisdictions so that we can have a level playing field, and furthermore, a involved discussion of this project to see if we can possibly move forward and remove what is the longest-standing conflict remaining in the past transportation plans. I mean, once we get beyond this, then we have finished the major obstacles of projects that were started decades ago, and we will be able to move forward in this 21st century, working on new projects and new ideas. Let me stop with that and turn it over to Doug Failing, and Doug may be bashful about noting that he did his primary work in mining and in tunneling, and we're really fortunate to have a director of our Caltrans district who not only knows the art and development and the management of freeways, but also is professionally well-schooled and versed in the nature of this project.
Thank you, Mark. Well, he said everything I was going to say, so. Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, I also appreciate the opportunity to come here this evening. As you can well imagine, the name Caltrans has polarized forces around the 710 for many, many years. Some very pro the currently approved project, and some very against the currently proposed project. The biggest issue with that is, because of that polarization, nothing has happened in the corridor for many, many, many years. When Roger was brand-new onboard, myself and our director, Jeff Morales, approached Roger about finding some neutral mediator to come in and look at this project with fresh eyes, to find something that the region can move forward with, that hopefully the region can agree on, so that we can do something transportation-wise in this particular corridor for many of the reasons that Mark has mentioned on air quality and other issues. After a while, Roger came back and came to us with a proposal, and it's a very good proposal. As Mark mentioned, I went to a mining school, and I was very, very, I very much liked the idea of what's being proposed here. The whole idea of a tunnel is something I just kind of, I kind of get into. The technology that we're using here, the boring machine with a pressure-activated face, was brand-new at the time I was going through college. They were studying it just briefly, and it was very small bore diameter tunnels, but here in this particular case, we're talking fifty-three-foot diameter tunnel. The types of things they're doing now in Europe and in Asia, it's a very doable type of technology. So, from my perspective, my background, I'm very comfortable with that technology, the tunnel itself, particularly with the geology and the water issues that we've got. I know that there are many others besides myself that are going to have to get comfortable with that concept of that technology. But for me, some of the bigger questions remain, have to do with the air scrubbers, that type of technology. That's a technology I'm not as familiar with, and that's something that I'm going to have to get comfortable with, and I have an understanding of, as well as the long-term maintenance and operation characteristics of it. But there's also another discussion we're having, and that has to do with Huntington Drive, interchange at Huntington, what type of interchange, no interchange at Huntington Drive, and how does that impact all the dynamics of air quality in the particular region? It's very important that we be able to proceed with some preliminary studies so that we can take these concepts forward to find out if we really have a viable alternative or not. At this particular point in time, we're very fortunate. Adam Schiff, congressman for the area, is proposing money in the federal transportation omnibus bill that would allow us to be able to do some studies in the corridor. That with MTA money that's currently budgeted would let us move forward in these three basic areas to be able to determine if we really have a viable alternative that we can build in this corridor. My gut tells me yes, but there are really some people that we're going to need to satisfy on two of these basic technical questions. With that, I feel very comfortable that we can come up with something that may well work for the region, this corridor. But from Caltrans' perspective, since we've been so, issues have been so polarized around this for so long because of us, our basic question is, does the region support it? And it's very important that we hear from you to find out if the region is capable of supporting this new concept. With that, I'll open it to questions?
Okay. Questions from the council?
I've got a bunch.
Okay. Mr. Portantino.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you to the three of you for coming out today. It's not often that we get the big three in our small city council chamber, so I am impressed that you would take the time to come out and share your feelings and allow us to put you on the hot seat, so to speak. I did watch the Pasadena City Council meeting where you did your presentation there, and they had a very nice, robust discussion on the issue, and I'm appreciative of the opportunity to share as well. And I, Mr. Snowball, I appreciate you saying we can also talk about anything else on our minds, so I might take you up on that offer as well. As far as traffic increase, have you done a model of what the potential traffic increase to La Cañada would be if it was completed?
The current 710 recorded decision contained a project which had traffic modeling, which did show what the increased traffic through La Cañada, Flint Ridge would be if that particular project was built. That project was anticipating six mixed-flow lanes, three in each direction, plus an HOV lane. This particular tunnel option, we are talking about three lanes in each direction or a six-lane facility. It's very necessary that we attain the additional air quality by losing the lane out of the scrubbers. So, we haven't done the study of this particular option yet. We anticipate it will have less of a traffic impact than the project that's in the currently approved recorded decision, because there are less lanes. But that would be a part of what we would do with the Congressman Schiff money, as well as the matching funds that MTA is looking at.
And those other numbers, it's, what, about a hundred and twenty thousand extra cars a day or something to that effect?
I don't remember what the numbers are, but we will certainly be able to provide them to you.
I think it's well over a hundred thousand additional cars.
Could I just ask a quick question that's related to that? The recorded decision, that study was done when?
When.
How many years ago?
As a brand-new design division chief in 1994, I remember signing off on the project approval report, so I would say that's a good eight to ten years old.
Okay, thanks.
The actual recorded decision was finalized by FHWA, and I believe, 2002, where the decision was actually finalized. And in that recorded decision, they noted that the project would need to be reviewed on the, every time a regional transportation plan was reviewed, which we're now doing, and we are currently reviewing. And secondly, as Caltrans finalized work on the EIS, there would be a review of that work to refresh any data or to look at any recent or current conditions.
So, relatively speaking, it's fairly old.
I think I can jump in there, too.
Original work is old.
Yeah, I think the numbers, I pulled up the numbers on the volumes. The foothill freeway north of the 710, in 1994, the count was 119,000. The 2015 no-build was 210,000. The 2015 build was 247,000. So, from 119 to 247.
And I'm looking at something that, in 94, they had 97, and then in 2015, 207,000, which I guess is the 710 model evaluation that the city of Pasadena, South Pasadena did. So, we're looking at it, no matter how you slice it, we're looking at a significant increase in traffic.
We are currently, in the transportation plan, we have done revised forecasts based upon the current economic employment and housing forecast, and we've also done the projections within the corridor with the project, and we can provide you that information. And I believe it is, given the increase in the population and employment forecast within the region, that the actual volumes are higher, but I can't, I don't remember the precise numbers, councilmember, but they are higher than what you stated.
Do you have any numbers on the increase in traffic that La Cañada has received as the 210 has been continued?
Yes, we do, and I don't have those numbers. But I did receive from staff a report that with the completion of the 210 east beyond 215, that there has been an increase in traffic on the 210 moving east-west. And there also has been an increase in the amount of trucks moving on the 210 east-west.
All right, because I'd be curious to know those numbers, because I'm sure you're all aware, that freeway was finished, and there was no additional mitigating measures for our neck of the woods at all associated with that construction, nor was there any effort to give us any mitigating measures, and the problem was increased again. So, I, there's kind of two, when we discuss mitigation, there's kind of two issues. There's mitigation from past freeways, and then there's mitigation going forward. So, they're kind of, one is very near and dear to our heart, because we currently have a problem that we haven't received any mitigation for thirty years. So, that's why I bring that up, and that exacerbated it, and now we're discussing creating a bigger problem.
Councilmember, I'm not sure that we're creating a bigger problem over and above what's in the current RTP and the current record of decision, but I will say that one of the, one of the requests that the Assemblywoman for this area asked that we explore would be not only the impacts on the South Pass and Alhambra communities, as well as the LA portion of the community, of the facility, but that we would look at the impacts that the project might create in the north, in other parts of her district. And one of the, and Roger Snowball had already indicated that one of our commitments, as we looked at impacts, would in fact be to examine further impacts on the community. And furthermore, I noted in my comments that we're looking at other alternative systems within the region that might provide truck relief, so that truck traffic, which is the fastest-growing portion of traffic within our region, that there might be mitigation that's provided to this portion of the region.
I'm glad you brought that up, because one of the things that I found interesting is Mr. Snowball's opening comments. You talked about allowing trucks as a way to get federal financing and creating an interstate, and I notice from the presentation that was made at the city of Pasadena, Mr. Pisano, you were soft-selling the likelihood that it would be trucks, allowed trucks. So, that seems to be a change in the scenario since the presentation was made to the city of Pasadena, and I'm wondering if they've been told that one of the new funding mechanisms is to allow trucks to help facilitate the funding, so I don't know if that's been communicated.
Excuse me, when we had those discussions with Pasadena and South Pasadena, that was always a part of it, that we couldn't have trucks on it, so it wasn't eligible for a, for an interstate designation. However, if there was some way to do it, and particularly if we tied it in with the southern part of the 710 and the truck lanes and that sort of thing, maybe there was some way to get it designated, and that would facilitate us being able to support the whole thing. Primarily, hopefully, would be with some type of toll for the trucks that would go through, maybe even a separate tunnel. But the real solution, I think we probably all agree with, is to really look at the truck network differently than we're looking at a car network, and facilitating the movement of freight far differently than it's facilitated today through a series of new truck lanes that would be supported by the shippers themselves.
Well, where I'm going with this is, one of the things that you guys discussed at South Pass and Pasadena was the need to get community buy-in above and beyond city council members, and the Pasadena City Council was very concerned about allowing trucks. Actually, one of their council members also brought up the toll issue, and I think it was expressed that it would not be a toll road as a first choice, so.
As a first choice.
So, I don't think his reaction would be as warm if he knew that there was a potential, a stronger potential of toll roads. But my, where I'm going with that is, in order to be fair to the communities that you're wanting to buy in, I think a basic question would be, what is the truck strategy from the get-go? And Mr. Pisano, at the Pasadena meeting, you talked about the alternative of doing a lane through the 1, a raised lane through the 110, and that the decision hasn't been made about what would be the truck corridor. And I guess what I'm trying to say is, it seems to me that that would be an issue that would be at the forefront of this. There would be no trucks, or yes, there are trucks, in order to get an intelligent response from the community stakeholders to decide. I mean, we're not talking about La Cañada here, we're talking about La De Vista, we're talking about the whole 710 corridor, La Cressena, and the 210. I mean, that's a raised portion of the freeway, it's not underground, and whether or not trucks are going to come through at an increased rate would seem to be the first piece of information people would need to make a decision.
First of all, I commented at Pasadena, and also, Councilmember Spence can further share with you the truck movement, goods movement strategy that we're developing within the region. And the basic strategy is to develop truck lanes and truckways in which the trucking industry, particularly that coming out of the port and moving east, but then we also have a portion of east that, and coming out of the ports that need to move north. And the basic strategy that we are developing is a system of truck lanes, truckways. The routes for that are essentially the 60 freeway for east-west, because there's right away in that particular, more right away in that particular route. And furthermore, the topography on that route is much more conducive for trucks. And the system moving north is primarily on the 5. Those are the areas that we're looking at for the development of that system, and furthermore, given the financial constraints in the region, we're looking for that to be almost exclusively paid by fees and tolls on the trucking industry. As it relates to the 210, we believe that if we're able to implement this strategy, and that's what I refer to at Pasadena, that we will be able to find routes that do not move through the northern tier east-west and the northern tier up to the 5, excuse me, the more inner tier, but rather to use the basic backbones that I was mentioning. As it relates specifically to the 710 tunnel, we, if we're going to try to create a level playing field for trucks within the region, we don't want to have a tollway in which they're told, and then other freeways which they are not. So, for that reason, we're looking at making sure that we don't circumvent the basic strategy, councilmember.
The reality, though, is if I said to you, if you looked in your crystal ball if trucks would be allowed through the tunnel or not, we wouldn't know at this point.
No, no.
At this point, we couldn't, we couldn't tell right now.
At this point in time, we couldn't, because we haven't started the work that would really enable us to explore it, and in full transparency... And, and in full transparency with the community, that information will be brought forward as we look at it. What we're attempting to do right now is to frame it in such a way where we can in fact share with the community, here's an idea, here are the issues we're looking at, and here are the funding strategies that we're looking at. And for-
If I just might just clarify, when we started this, we fully intended to not have trucks.
Right.
Because we thought the state still had, had money, and we thought we could, we could really do this about the same cost, so let's just do it that way, and not, and not deal with the truck issue. With all the state funding and all the truck and goods movement things, we're starting to talk more and more about, well, how can we handle the trucks? And so that's where it's coming into discussion.
And that's the scary part, in that it's, as I think Doug, you mentioned at the Pasadena meeting, it comes down to a policy decision that the truck, the tunnel will be designed large enough to facilitate trucks, and it becomes at that point a policy decision of to allow or not to allow, which could be changed down the road. If you went forward with not having trucks, it could be changed at some point in the future and allow trucks.
The, the discussion has always been not so much trucks, yes or no, as it is through trucks, because local, local delivery trucks, the guys going to the local Ralphs, the local Albertsons, the local delivery guy is always intended to be able to use the road, along with buses and other things, and once I've designed them for them, it fits a truck.
How do you know the difference, coming up to 710? How do you, how, how are they routed off of?
One always has to count on the good graces of, of the various people obeying the law.
Oh, yeah, okay. That makes me feel good.
But the problem, the problem too is, we're not talking about local serving trucks. We're, we're talking about not only trucks that, that serve the LA County area, but, but serve the entire United States, the Northwest, and that is a result of a conscious decision by the Port of Los Angeles, the Port of Long Beach, to become this, this mega port, and it, it's hurt us. And, and our voices have not been heard as part of this process, and, and all you have to do, and it was really interesting, I'm going to share it with you, because we, we've been here, our community was here before the freeway, and I'm sure you all know that, but we have not only rows and rows of homes immediately adjacent to the freeway, but we have several schools, and, and I was sitting there at a, a public function, the school right outside, and with the traffic roaring by, where you can't even hear over the microphone. And one of the things that was very interesting about that, it's about every 10 seconds or 15 or 20 seconds, a truck comes by, and it's about 10 times louder every time a truck comes by. So, if you're talking about adding more trucks, increasing the truck traffic, I can just see that now being a constant barrage of the trucks, and now it's going to be 10 times louder, and you, and you don't have to be an engineer to figure that out. It will be a real problem adding trucks to the freeway.
If I, if I might comment on the truck issue, I, the region has a, a major impact on our surface transportation system on moving goods, and we have become the logistics center for the United States and one of the logistics centers in the world, and a large part of the economy that is now being built in Southern California is predicated on that. Now, having, having said all of that, they have community impacts. They also have safety issues on our freeway system, and they have congestion impacts on, on the freeway system. And I, I strongly urge the council and the communities to look at what is the goods movement strategy that we're proposing for the region? How are we planning to do this? Our intent, and I stated it in Pasadena and also in South Pasadena, our intent is that this not be the goods movement corridor, the transshipping corridor for this region, that there are more effective routes, and we're planning to build facilities on those routes that truckers will use. And, and it'll be a financial strategy to encourage truckers not to use these routes. And one of the reasons, quite frankly, we're looking at the issue of tolls on this, and that is so that the truckers not say, oh, it's cheaper to go over here, so let's just go over there. I mean, we're, we're really doing it to, to, to sustain the policy of what routes are most effective within our region, and, and how can we effectively move these goods. So, I, I urge you not to just look at this project in isolation of that goods movement strategy, and that we look at them collectively together. And I know that's a difficult concept for me to sit here and present to you, but it, but let me just suffice to say, it is not our intent to make this a major through fare for the movement of goods. It is our intent to, to remove this bottleneck that, that is really confounding the, the movement primarily of, of people in, in this part of the region.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few more questions. One of the things that several of you in your presentations to South Pass and Pasadena mentioned, that if those particular cities did not support the tunnel study, you would not go forward, is that go the same for us? I think Mr. Pizano and Mr. Snowball, you both mentioned that at both of those cities, that if-
We're looking for the communities that are impacted to give an indication that we will not move forward on a tunnel concept, but we intend to move forward on the record of decision and implement that. This, I mean, it's, it is one of the key priorities for this region. Our Regional Council has not backed away from that, but what they have directed me to do, and to work with, with Roger and Doug, and that is to find a way where we can do this without taking the homes and disrupting the community. Now, if, if you don't want us to look at that particular option, I'm, I'm absolutely certain that, that we would listen to your voice, as we are the other communities. But, but I want it, I did, I want to be real clear, this is a critical air quality of all of the projects in our region, we get more air quality emission reductions from this project than we do from the others, just because of the bottleneck that is created because of the project, council member.
And I, and I think going on the mayor's point before, you know, with five schools within, you know, 100 feet of the freeway, and, you know, with pending legislation in Sacramento to prohibit the construction of future schools within 500 feet of a freeway, obviously there is a recognizable effect of the air pollution. In other words, all those articles in the Star News and the LA Times about living near freeways, you know, cuts your life expectancy and raises your cancer levels, and, you know, we share your concerns with pollution, we're just thinking about where it's going to come.
Yeah.
It's going to come right to us with 150,000 new vehicles and potentially diesel fuel coming, barreling down our community, it's going to come right into those primary receptors, and, you know, our children that are, you know, within 100 feet of the freeway are going to get more pollution. So we share your concern with pollution, but it's not about shifting it from one place and sending it to another, it's cleaning it in one place. Which actually, I have a question for Mr. Phaling, or whoever's talking about the scrubbers. Does that scrub the sulfur and the, and the particulate matter in diesel as well? I thought the technology didn't quite exist yet to do both internal combustion and diesel.
And that's also what I want to find out. It's, it's been a proposal, it's been proposed as something that would help us significantly reduce the, the emissions, certainly enough to, to take care of the going from eight lanes to six lanes. But there's, I don't personally know enough about this technology, and that's part of why we need the money to go forward with the studies to obtain that additional information.
Do you know the answer to that?
Yeah. Yes, the, the scrubbers do have catalysts in them to take care of the particulate matter, the NOx, and all the different kinds of things that are, that are really bad, that are associated with diesel. But I would also say that there's a lot more technology that can be applied to diesel trucks, that I think we all have an interest in, in encouraging our legislature, legislature to encourage more trucking companies to go to the cleaner burning diesel, and that would certainly be a huge help, particularly from the kinds of things you're talking about. We know, because we operate the largest natural gas fleet of buses in the world, and that technology is very available, it's cheaper in the long run, and so we're, certainly would like to encourage a lot more of the truck industry to, to go to cleaner fuels.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pizano?
The scrubbing technology that we're, that Roger was alluding to, in fact, would be taking the exhaust, the residual exhaust over and above the current controls on automobiles and trucks, and then applying scrubbers to that vented flume. And that we know that we can get additional reductions over and above what we were even planning on that project if we introduce that particular technology. Secondly, as it relates to trucks, we have placed, we, we rely on federal controls on diesel emissions, because that, under the Interstate Commerce provision and the Clean Air Act, that is the responsibility of the federal government. In that portion of our plan, air plan, the air plan that we just developed with the air district and sent to the Air Resources Board, the major debate that was, was, that occurred in that plan was, the state needed to do more controls on automobiles, and the federal government needed to do more controls on diesel if we're to meet the NOx, and also the, the toxic issue as it relates to diesel emissions. In that area, we, we pushed both the state to move forward to implement its measures. EPA indicated that we can't tell them what to do directly, but we certainly can through Congress affect what they're going to do, and we have to go further on diesel. And furthermore, the issue of, of impacts of trucks on all freeways, and I'm, and you cited the problems in this community, but the, but, but the, the, the communities that, that are adjacent to the corridors that we're primarily planning to look at goods movement, this is the prime, this is their issue. And it's, it's as emotional, and it's as contentious, and, and Councilmember Spence can, can attribute to the, or can attest to the amount of, of debate that we've had at our transportation community from those communities on that issue. And we're, we're quite frankly looking at how can we in fact get trucks on, on corridors, and furthermore, how can we get alternative fuels, which we have more, which we can do on those corridors, given the, the productivity and the efficiency gains that the truckers will make on those corridors? And we, we think that there are real strategies within this basin so that we can in fact deal with that issue. I mean, it is a basin-wide issue, primarily impacted by those communities, but I don't want to, I don't want to imply that it's not on every freeway, council member.
Can I just follow up? Okay, because I had something about regional strategy. Okay, but before we get off the air emissions- Okay, go ahead. Can I just follow up, because it's on your point, and then I, that way we don't have to keep going back to it. Yes, sir. Okay. We have, historically, 20 years ago, 10 years ago, it'd be a very rare event to have traffic and trucks back up where they would be actually sitting going 10, 15 miles an hour, have the congestion on the 210 freeway. And that, when you're alluding to an increase in, or reduction in emissions, you're talking about freeing up traffic so that trucks aren't stopping and going and so forth. But really, in point of fact, and we've, we're already beginning to see it now with the extension of the 210 to the 15, we're getting it backed up from Pasadena, coming into Lockenada, actually both ways, and on the 2 freeway. So what we're concerned about is that we're going to have increased emissions in Lockenada with these, with, with all the traffic now crawling, and which it will. I can, I'm not a, a traffic expert, but you put it anymore on, in rush hour, it's already backing up to Berkshire, it's going to, it's going to come all the way through Lockenada. And we have these schools, we have these residents within, I could throw a tennis ball from the school, the sports fields. Is there a study, have you done the study, that says, okay, we're going to, you know, it's going to, yeah, we're going to fix that, but it's going to be a problem, you're going to say it's not a problem? I mean, before we jump out and, and spend billions of dollars, you know, and talking about these solutions for somewhere else, what's being done about what I see are pretty obvious and, and pretty certain effects for Lockenada, Flintridge?
Mayor, in terms of the future network, and I use transportation network because we're looking at freeways, we're looking at carpool lanes, we're looking at truckways, and we're looking at, at multiple transit systems. For those major systems and the EIR and the, on the plan that we have out for review right now, we've looked at that issue. What are going to be the forecasted volumes, and what are going to be the impacts on the region and on, and, and at a gross level, not 50 feet level? That is kind of, that's the kind of, of analysis that you do when you look specifically at a project. So I want to just be very clear, we haven't gotten to that type of level, but the growth, but the broader systems level, yes, we have looked at those impacts, and we're required to look at those impacts. And, and let me just say that this region is facing some daunting challenges. We have growth, we've had growth, and we hopefully will have growth in the future so that we economically can sustain ourselves, and we're not building infrastructure. I mean, I want to be very clear, we're not funding and building infrastructure. And the gentlemen that are, that are the real implementers and our partners in this process, we're struggling with how in fact do we handle and accommodate that growth. Now, having said that, if we're not successful, and that growth continues, I will tell you that the freeway congestion that you have right now, and that you're experiencing, that you mentioned in your question, Mayor, that's going to get even more intense if we don't find ways to, to effectively remove bottlenecks. Now, that, that's the dilemma that the region is confronting, so.
On, on that note, there was a regional, regional plan put forth a few years ago that Congressman Rogan got $46 million to implement, which is the low-build alternative, which has not fully been implemented. And my question is, since we got $46 million in federal funding to implement an alternative strategy to the one you're proposing, wouldn't it be prudent to fully implement the low-build alternative to find out if it works before we move to the next alternative? Since that hasn't, unless I'm wrong, I don't believe it's been fully implemented, I think about 10 million's been spent, I don't think the whole 46 has been spent. But, you know, to have the federal government fund $46 million for Project A, and 25% through it say, well, we're not going to go do that, we're going to go spend millions of dollars to study Alternative B, that just doesn't seem like sound planning. So, if you could respond to that, that'd be-
Yes, I can, Mr. Councilman. The, the money is not entirely spent, but it was never intended as a replacement for this particular project. The money was intended as a stopgap measure to improve some of the congestion within some of the local areas and address some local issues, but it was never intended nor purported to be a replacement for closing the gap on the 710.
Well, wouldn't you want to know if, how effective it was before you went to another-
I'm fairly comfortable, I already know how effective it will be, sir.
Even though it's not been fully-
Yes.
And what we have done, and we were acquired under the Record of Decision, is to incorporate the projects on the no-build alternative, to incorporate those into the analysis that we would perform in the transportation plan review. So we're able to, even though the projects physically haven't been built, we have the analytical and modeling capacity to say, if they had been built, this is what in fact they would do. This is the amount of people they would move, and this is the amount of demand that wouldn't get moved, and that evaluation has been part of the RTP review in the corridor. And you would say, yes, but that's a theoretical evaluation, but, but in fact, all of our major decisions that we make within the, within the region on projects is based upon that kind of analysis. So we, we do have the technical capacity to do that evaluation, and, and we were required to do it, and we did do it.
And again, I apologize if you hear trouble in my voice and, and passion, because this is, this is passionate stuff. I mean, as the mayor pointed out, I mean, you know, we have, you know, five schools and a bunch of kids, and, and a serious problem, and it's a problem that was put forth, you know, three decades ago when we weren't a city, when we didn't have the ability to negotiate mitigating measures, and if you've ever seen the freeway agreement that the county did on our behalf, it's three pages long. And for three decades, we've been promised sound walls and haven't got it, and now we're self-funding our own MBSSR study to, to do environmental work, which is something that the state should be doing for us, but we're spending $500,000, and we respectfully asked for a reimbursement agreement to be signed, and we appreciate the letter back from Mr. Snowball saying that you would prefer not to take it to the board, but those are the type things that we would prefer to happen. We would prefer to know that we're going to get reimbursed for our half a million dollar investment for a 30-year mitigating problem, and before we even look at creating the next three-decade problem that we're going to have to be catching up. So, there are certain things that, you know, can buy goodwill and buy less passion from us. The reimbursement agreement would be one. Mr. Phaling, I told you as you came in, I was going to bring up the Caltrans sign on Angeles Crest Highway. You know, that's a case in point where Caltrans told us they weren't going to build, put a sign up in the middle of Angeles Crest Highway, and then showed up three years later to build it without telling us, after they had told us they weren't going to build it. Then we get the whole community united about, around an alternative that we can support, and Caltrans can be the winner, and we're told, well, we're not going to do that, we're going to put it in the place that people don't want, and we're still going to leave the one in the place where people do want. So, you know, my, my point to you is, there are certain things that can take some of the stress level out of our voice that I, I personally would like to, to see addressed. A document that was handed to me on a pre-meeting before this meeting mentioned that the city of Pasadena and the city of South Pasadena support the study of the tunnel. It's my understanding that neither city has taken a position- It's my understanding that neither city has taken a position in support of the tunnel, they've both taken a no-oppose position. So that's a document that says two other cities support this when that's not necessarily the case. So, I don't know if you've seen that document, but it was given to me, it was given to me by MTA that both cities support the study, and I don't think they've taken a position, so.
They've taken, both of them have taken positions to not oppose
Right.
the study at this point, that they would work with us, but they're not taking, they're not changing their position at all, they're interested in seeing how it goes, and that's all that they've done.
But the document that was generated by MTA says that they actually support the study, and that's different than not opposing.
Yeah, they're.
I don't know if you've even seen the document, but it was generated by the MTA. And that concerns me when there are those type situations. Actually, Mr. Snoble, in your letter to us about the sound walls, there's a mention about a one-third match, that if we provided a one-third match, we would go to the top of the funding list. But there was a proviso in your letter about, provided that that one-third was not from a designated transportation source. And my question is, if we were successful in getting our congressman to get us some federal transportation dollars to us that we could then forward on to you, would that apply or not apply?
I'm not sure that I know, do we know?
We talked about not taking the same public money that we're going to give to the MTA.
If it was, if it was, if it's a new source or something that isn't something that we're competing for in other, other parts of the region, we'd probably consider that. We just don't want it to be taken from something that we'd already get, like if you took it out of formula funds from the federal government, I don't think we would count that, but if it was a new earmark, it would probably be fine.
Right, because that's, you know, something that we wouldn't have control over. I mean, we'd be lucky to have our congressman, you know, designate those funds from a federal source, and we wouldn't know, you know, how those funding sources get made. I mean, I'd hate to go out there and get the funding, come to you with one-third only to find out it didn't apply.
Well, and that, that could be a very real situation, that happens occasionally where people do get earmarks and then they cannot make those earmarks work because they can't pass all the federal tests that you need to pass to be able to utilize that money. And sometimes we have to do extraordinary things to be able to make that money work. So we'd like to work with you going into it so, to make sure that everything, when it does happen, happens to your benefit and that.
And we did have two of your lobbyists in the meeting, and we appreciate, we appreciate that overture. But I'm just pointing out that those are the type mitigating measures that we're trying to put in place for the last 30-year problem. And, you know, the reimbursement agreement on the MBSSR seems like a very simple thing to us, that it's revenue neutral to the MTA because it would only be funded when our number would come up anyway. So it seems to be fairly logical to have you sign it that we're going to get reimbursed, not have it be applied to a potential one-third. So I'm hoping that, you know, the sign would go away and the signature would go on the letter, would be, or the sign goes to where we want it, the whole community would like it, and Caltrans would be a hero. And you would be a hero if you sign that reimbursement agreement, so.
We would very much love to be able to solve the problem here. I mean, there's just no question about that, we know it's a real problem and we'd like to be able to do that. And like I said, six months ago, a year ago, we were much more optimistic about being able to do things than we are today because we've taken a huge hit from the state who would normally, that's the money we'd normally use to fund these things. So we're looking at every different kind of thing we can, there's a lot of decisions that have to be made at the state yet, so it's going to be a while before we're going to be able to work our way through some of those, some of those issues. But there's no lack of desire on our part to see if we can't work with you to make something happen that would be good for everybody.
Those are my questions for now. Greg, questions?
It's probably not as much of a question, and I don't want to belabor this point, but I think it is very important to understand that, you know, that we've got this deep wound in the, in the community. And it comes from the wound that was caused by the, by the 210 freeway. We have all kinds of problems that come from that, and we've been struggling mightily for a quarter of a century to try and mitigate those to some extent. And we're only now beginning to get there, doing it ourselves. And that is to simply try and mitigate the current situation. Now, what I heard today was, well, we're going to look further for mitigation from the, from the tunnel. And I understand the tunnel, you know, if you're looking at it from South Pasadena's perspective, the tunnel can be much better for them than a, than an open cut, no question about it. But our position relates to our citizens.
Right.
And so our citizens are looking at, you know, we're, we're trying to, trying to mitigate what we're dealing with now. Sound walls only goes a part of the way to doing that now. I mean, we know that sound walls aren't effective for many, especially in an area like this where we have hills and we have people uphill, and sound walls aren't going to, aren't going to solve all those problems. Now we're looking at, at a project that would have a significant increase on that. And particularly, and I agree that if you look at the truck situation, for instance, if we're going to deliver trucks to the intersection of the 134 and the 210 freeway, in essence, where the, where the 710 comes in, do we really believe that they're all going to turn right or left? That they're not going to come up the 210 and make, make the shortest route to Bakersfield and routes north? So the question is, how can we look at the people of La Cuenada and say, well, there will be sufficient mitigation to, that this is actually better or at least neutral to you? And that's where it's real hard. I mean, as I say, the sound walls, we know their limits, and we know, and we're moving in that direction already. What, what else is there that, that can be done that can, that can help to mitigate this impact? We know what's happening in South Pasadena, what can we do here?
Let me just reiterate, the, I won't call it a dilemma, the issue that you posed, we understand. And the region, and by the way, the resolution or the determination of where the primary goods movement will be within the region is a, is a new regional strategy that is in fact being put on the table. And we can show, we will be able to in this, in the ensuing evaluation of the tunnel, the fork, and the, and the development of the truckways within our region, we can give you an assessment as to where the, where the trucks will move, with and without these systems. I mean, one of the, one of the capacities that the region has developed over the last several decades is that we are now the national leader in understanding how trucks move. We were the first region to develop a truck movement model, and we've incorporated that into our, all the different modes, and we're the first region to put forward collection, I mean, whole new systems to move goods within our region. So Councilmember, the request that you made, what is the impact of this particular project, not a cut and cover but a tunnel, and given the development of the rest of the regional system and given the movement of both people and goods and trucks within this region, we will be able to put on the table that information. Now, can we tell it to you tonight? No, we cannot tell it to you tonight because we really, well, in fact, in part, we can. In part, the regional transportation plan that is out in, for review, if we, if we sat down in a workshop tonight, I mean, in a workshop forum, we could tell you our, our information today. Because we are, I mean, to a certain extent, we can in fact provide that information. I don't have it on the top of my head right now, but I know that the staff could provide it in working with your staff.
But are you suggesting that we'd actually be moving trucks off of the 210? We'd actually be improving the current situation?
Well, you know, it is possible. I mean, what we're proposing are truckways in which trucks are separated, physically separated. I didn't say elevated, I said separated, from the rest of traffic. And that they in fact be told, they pay to move on the system. Why would truckers be interested in doing that? Because they sit in traffic and they lose a lot of money when they sit in traffic. And if they can move on a system that they're paying for and move, then they're going to do that. And we just need to look at the entire system and make sure that those truckers who do, who want to avoid the fee don't.
Okay.
And that's, that's essentially the kind of, the concepts, Councilmember Brown, that we're looking at.
How does, but just one final thought, just, and I know you don't have a full-blown plan, but how does closing this gap then relate to that? I mean, I understand the advantages of that kind of an approach, how does this play into that unless we're feeding into the 210?
Let me just say that we're, that the current transportation plan calls for the gap closed. Now, up to now, up to this point in time, it's been closed using the decisions or the results of the current record of decision, which has been stalled. It's been stalled for almost, it is almost coming to the end of its fourth decade, to be honest with you, in terms of number of years. But we, we're counting that on the, on the transportation plan, and we also are counting in the transportation plan for a truckway system to be built in the region. And we can tell you the results of those systems on this particular community if we, if we delve into the technical appendix. What we have not yet fleshed out in the current regional system is that we haven't yet fleshed out the truckway system as it, as it goes north. I want to be perfectly, I just want to tell you what we have and what we don't have. And that's, that is an area that we identified, we need, that we'll handle in the next transportation plan. So I, we can tell you what information we have today, how this truckway system will impact the, how it will impact this particular community, Councilmember. I don't know if that's fully clear, if my colleagues can help me further explain it.
Let me just try to help out because you have a specific problem, a specific challenge right here that's been caused because things weren't done the way they were done today. I mean, we wouldn't build a freeway today without the mitigations involved, and that wasn't done 30 years ago. And it's too bad because we always looked at California as being the leader and that sort of thing, and we come to LA and we find out it really wasn't. But the simple fact of the matter is that if we don't do anything, your problem's going to get worse and worse and worse. I mean, it just, it just is, it, there's, you just can't help that. There's nothing that's going to stop it. And so what we need to do is come up with really an overall comprehensive approach in how we're going to solve this whole goods movement thing. It's very unique from our perspective because we do have the ports, but we are the most convenient place to ship goods from the Pacific Rim. It's going to continue to grow at very, very robust rates, and there's just no, no stopping that. So we've got to figure out how we can get that freight through this region much better than it does now without affecting all our other surface transportation. And that's just not one project, that is a ton of projects. It's not just freeways and trucks, it's railroads too. Because the more we could put over into the railroad side, the better off we're going to be, particularly with the improvements on the Alameda Corridor, the Alameda Corridor East, and all the way to, to the California border, we're going to have to be able to look at how we can move more on the rail system, and there's, there are ways to do that. So we've really got to start to get into this thing and look at it from a comprehensive standpoint and try to get all these different kinds of things. We already mentioned the technology from, from emissions. My personal favorite is let's, let's go to smaller vehicles. If we had smaller vehicles, we'd get a lot more vehicles through the area, but we would insist on a 2,000-pound hunk of metal every time we travel with only one person in it, and that's just going to continue to slow down. And if we can continue to stay in that mode, traffic's going to get slower and slower and slower, it's going to go by those schools slower and slower and slower. So we've got to come up with some, some really overall comprehensive ways to be able to attack these, these issues. And I think that's what we're, we're trying to do, is to come up with really a comprehensive, really a dramatic plan to be able to do that. And then we're going to have to figure out how we're going to pay for it because that's going to be another big challenge. But we think there's ways of doing that as well.
And I appreciate those comments, and there are, you know, very good projects that have occurred and are occurring to get cars and trucks off the road, as you say, the Alameda Corridor, the eastern extension for the rail, and that could, you know, are great projects. We have great projects like the extension of the Gold Line. But we're in an era where there's very scarce dollars, and the question I keep asking myself is why are we spending money on this? Why shouldn't we be pushing those projects, the ones that, you know, that are not controversial? Well, that's an overstatement, but it seems to me they're more sensible and cost-effective than spending billions of dollars for a tunnel, coming back up and, and causing some real significant effects to those people who aren't fortunate enough to, to have the tunnel. And having said that, you know, why, you know, if, if the tunnel's good enough for South Pasadena, then, you know, why shouldn't we be, you'd be doing a study right now to look for La Cuenada? You know, we, you know.
It does come above grade over the 210, I mean, over the Foothill Boulevard.
Mayor, if I might, just might note, we look, we've developed the capacity to evaluate all of the investments that we make within the region based upon what we call a performance standard review. And that, and basically it's, for every dollar you invest, how do you get the greatest improvement in mobility, air quality, safety, et cetera? I have to tell you that this particular project is the most, when we, when we run this project through that screen, it is by far and away the most productive project in the region, by far and away. And the reason being is because it's a bottleneck in a system, and the system doesn't work well because that bottleneck exists. Now, having, having said all of that, it's one of the reasons why the region for, for a long period of time has said, let's find a way to solve this problem and deal with the mitigation. And we believe we can. Now, on the issue that we're discussing tonight, and that is the broader regional system, we have, as Roger pointed out, we are ahead of the country, in fact, we're ahead of the world in looking at systems for movement of goods because this is such a big issue. The work that we're now doing, and we did the plan for the Alameda Corridor 18 years ago. I started on that with Glenn Anderson, and we addressed the Alameda Corridor. And the work east was done in the last 10 years. And the notion of truck lanes and truckways is the, is the latest innovation we've put on the table. Our biggest hurdle right now is how do we finance these? And the only way we can see financing these in the foreseeable future is in fact to have the users of, and the people who move goods increasingly pay to move those goods through this region, and that's what we've put on the table. And now we just have to make sure that if we move to that kind of a system, it, it works correctly and that, and trucks and vehicles don't go in other corridors. But those are the kinds of systems, and I, and by the way, I urge the city and your staff to take a very careful look at the current transportation and the growth plan associated with it. Because these dilemmas of growth, what transportation facilities and how we pay for them are at the corner of, of the debate on that plan. And if we can't resolve the debate and move this forward, then, then this region, because we need these for air quality and we committed to do these for air quality, we could be in a situation where this region is really stymied, where we fall out of air quality conformity and we lose our federal and state dollars. I mean, there are real impacts of, I'm talking about the broader plan, I'm not talking about the tunnel or this project. And Councilmember Spence and Mayor Protemalasso can speak, because they've been involved in the committees that are in fact developing these. But, but the issue that's in the, in front of this body tonight is precisely the issues that we're debating in those plans, particularly as it relates to goods movement and community impacts. But I've said three things there. This is a productive project. It is the most productive project in the region. Secondly, we have developed alternative systems and how they impact communities. And thirdly, we've put fairly innovative funding concepts on the table that we're going to need to move our political leadership in Washington and Sacramento to let us do.
Thank you. Any other?
I have a couple of questions, just one point of clarification, because I thought I heard you say this, but I may have heard it incorrectly, that the tunnel would create three lanes in tunnel? So, so we're building into it a bottleneck with the existing four lanes on the, on the freeway that go into a three-lane tunnel?
Three lanes in each direction, and we can take care of that. Yeah, I'm sure we can deal with the bottleneck issue. As you, currently as you come north of the 10 freeway, it really gets down real quick to just one, a single lane off-ramp. So that, that'll be easy to deal with, and same thing on the other end. We've got Del Mar and other places where we can take care of that. I'm not worried about that.
Okay. What are the likelihoods, what is the likelihood of this truck route system being ready and functioning the same time that a tunnel would be ready and functioning? being ready and functioning the same time that a tunnel would be ready and functioning?
The whole system physically to build the truckway system that we have on the table, which is not, which is our starter line.
It's not even that, yeah.
We're, we're planning to have that online and, and operating. I think if we look at the milestone dates, about five years, I think it's nine, it's 2023, whereas I believe the tunnel is a, is a 2018, 2019. So in terms of scheduling, you're going to see a high. It is, that's to have the complete system that we're talking about, the first system, which goes from the ports east and over to Barstow, operating. Now, let me just say, by way of financing, if, if we're able to develop a revenue back system, and we're not successful in Washington on funding, you might see the truckways before we see the tunnel. I mean, this, the funding issues in many respects are going to determine when we build things.
Yeah. From my understanding, you're looking for some sort of support or something from this council, and, and I know what I'd like to see back before we give you any answer is, is the numbers showing the increases in traffic with the, currently the 210 extension, the projections of traffic increases with this gap closure, a decision on trucks or no trucks within that tunnel, because I think that makes a huge difference, other mitigating measures in addition to sound walls that you could put in place here in La Cuenyada. And I, you know, we've talked with the, our NVSSR about pave, different alternative pavements, that kind of stuff. So, I mean, we, and with the NVSSR study, we also know that that is not going to have a huge impact. It'll have an impact on the neighbors directly next to the freeway, but certainly not everybody that's up or downhill. So what else can you do to do that, to, to mitigate that kinds of impacts? So those are the kinds of information that, that I'd like to see come back before I'd be willing to make any kind of statement or comment about what I think about this.
Dave?
Well, the time is getting there, and I think that all of you can see that my colleagues are very up on the issue and very articulate in their discussions and questioning. I will say that being involved in the Transportation Committee, it is extremely interesting to see the debate among all of the council members that are representing this, this whole region. And I do think that everybody has the same concerns that we have. What's it going to do to my community? And I, I know that the three of you understand where we're coming from, and, you know, rather than repeat a lot of stuff that has been said by my colleagues, we have a major concern here, and especially regarding the, the truck issues. I did have one question about the tunnel, and once this traffic comes out of the tunnel, Mark, you said that we can clean the air, we can keep the noise down with sound walls, but if you have an increase of 50 or 75% in, in traffic volume, forget the trucks at this point now, how, how do you mitigate the increase in the level of, of pollution once they come from the end of the tunnel up through the Chrysena Valley? And I'm not just saying, you know, La Cuenyada, we're looking at eastern Pasadena, western Pasadena, all of La Cuenyada, and all the way through the Chrysena Valley, up to San Juan de Hongo. And I, you know, this is an answer that I think we need also. How do, what type of pollution is going to take place once they come through there? That's, that's my basic question for the evening.
Councilmember Spence, the, the issue, once it leaves the tunnel and we do, and we lose, and the, and the vehicles are in an open environment, then it's the controls on the vehicles themselves. And that's why it's absolutely incumbent upon us within this region to continue to push the federal government, that they're going to have increased controls that are going to be placed on the use of diesel, well, heavy duty vehicles. It's both gas, diesel, natural gas, et cetera. That the current standards that have been developed are not sufficient for this basin to enable us to get to attainment, and that we have to push further. And the basic strategy of this basin is we need, in fact, our heavy duty vehicles to move to alternative fueled vehicles. And, and we know that, as Roger has stated tonight, he runs a fleet of buses on CNG. Our objective is that our, at a minimum, our, our heavy duty vehicles are CNG. And we also know that fuel cells are going to be available in the future for automobiles, and that we also know that they work for trucks. In fact, it may be even more viable for us to move them in the heavy duty vehicle fleet, and that is an effort that we're going to have to undertake if this basin is to get into attainment. Because I want you to know that the plan that was developed by our, our State Air Resources Board, and that is now before EPA, still has a large source of emissions, primarily coming from heavy, heavy duty vehicles and off, and off-road vehicles, tractors, et cetera. We are not in attainment by the year 2010 because of, of those fleets, and we have to push forward on them, council member. It's the issue that we've debated at SCAG, it's the issue that we represented before the Air District, it's the debate that we entered into with the Air Resources Board. And, and let me tell you, there are communities today that, that have two, three, and in the future they'll have four and five lanes of, of, of their highways, used only by heavy duty vehicles. That's how large the volume is. And particularly in the ports of the region that I referred to, that are in the corridor where goods are moving, and it's a critical regional issue. The region, to its, to its credit, understands it, we're rallying behind it, and we're trying to politically move that. But, but since you asked, council member, that, that is the, that is the key strategy. And by the way, associated with emissions will become, will also include noise. I mean, some of these alternative, some of the alternatives are less noisy, and I think Roger can speak to that on his bus fleet as an example.
Also, you brought up the different pavements. We do a lot of studies on this because the bus noise went, like on the bus way, that sort of thing. And the rubberized asphalt does cut down on the tire noise, doesn't cut down on the engine noise, but the tire noise, but you have to be going 40 or 50 miles an hour to make any difference at it. So if you're going at 35 miles an hour, it doesn't make a whole lot of difference. But we are looking at different kinds of things like that, different kinds of materials for sound walls that absorb sound as opposed to just redirect it, and those kinds of things. It's, it's a big issue throughout the region. You have a very big issue, but other, many other corridors also have the same issue. So we really are looking for technology to help solve a lot of the problems. My latest idea was, you know, these Bose headphones that you, that cancel out the noise. Well, that kind of technology may have some, maybe there's some way we can use that kind of technology to quiet down a freeway. I don't know yet, but I think technology does offer us an awful lot of, of hope for the future, and we just hope that we have the ability to apply some of that technology and be able to afford it.
Well, being exposed to the regionalism, the regionalism of the discussions that take place once a month, I'm certainly cognizant of, of everybody trying to do the best they can for the whole area. And I absolutely am not opposed to, to looking at studying the tunnel issue and studying, you know, just like the city of Pasadena and the city of South Pasadena. But I think that my colleagues have forcibly articulated the issues that we will need answers to. That's about all I have to say. I think we've talked about it quite, quite a lot.
Any, any other quick thoughts or questions that we missed?
Well, just, just a comment really, and I, I think it's, you know, there's no question there are regional issues here, but we're not a regional body. We're here, we represent the city of La Cuenyada. And one of the things that I think's incumbent on regional government is to, is that when there's a project that's going to have negative impacts on an area, you find a way to mitigate those, and you find a way to, to, to level the, the playing field. Because there's, you know, there are people that clearly in economic interests that strongly want this gap closed, but they shouldn't gain that economic advantage to the detriment of someone else. And so that's, I think, really what's incumbent on your agencies to, to look at. But you're here asking the city of La Cuenyada, what's, what's your view on this? And the tunneling really, in that sense, you know, in my mind, makes no difference. It doesn't matter whether it's a cut or a tunnel. We're just looking at it from the point of view of, of La Cuenyada. The question that we've always had, and the issue we've always had, is the effect of the traffic. And so that's really something that is within your all expertise to be able to try and address so that we can look at the people in La Cuenyada and say, this is a win-win. Right now, it doesn't, it doesn't have the earmarks of a, of a win-win. It may be a win for some regional interests, but it's certainly not a, it doesn't appear to me to be a win for the, for La Cuenyada.
Anthony?
You know, I was just going to, I, I think you articulated it very well. I mean, there is going to be an impact, and it doesn't matter whether the freeway through South Pasadena is above ground or below the ground. We get that impact. You know, I, I'm, you know, pleased for, you know, saving houses and trees and scrubbing the air, but it still doesn't change the impact for the Chrysena Valley. I do have one comment. The, the South Pasadena City Council has undergone a significant change since your first presentation. There are three new council members there since that presentation. So I would, I'm curious to know what the, the new makeup of the South Pasadena City Council would feel about their not opposed position, and I would encourage you to seek that out because I'd be curious to know. And obviously, the Brown Act prevents me from going to three of them and asking them. So I would encourage you to find that out, and, and I think the city of Pasadena, some of their council members would also have a, a different take if they knew the significant discussion of the truck issue. And I think Laura's 100% right. Until there was a definitive answer on whether trucks would be going through, to me, that seems to be the first step in any discussion, would be for the planners for your agencies to sit down, and that doesn't take millions of dollars to, to figure that out. You know, the, I think, Mr. Prasanna, you mentioned it, I forget, the, the two meetings are a blur in my head at this point, talking about there are always going to be those vehicles who don't want to come to our region and are passing through from San Diego to parts north and parts north. They want to bypass downtown LA. That's different than regional transportation and moving goods within the region. That's those people who want to get away from us. And I, we really haven't touched upon how significant a flow of traffic is going to come down the 210 and bypass downtown altogether through our community. And I think that's a significant issue that I'd want to hear answers on. And, you know, I go back to the goodwill issue. You know, we talk about not having the ability to negotiate because we weren't a, a city when the freeway went through. You know, South Pasadena is the only city in the state that can't sit at the table and negotiate a freeway agreement because of the Martinez bill. And it would seem to me that that would be a good bone to throw into the pot. The full weight of your three agencies supporting the repeal of the Martinez bill would certainly buy a lot of goodwill and allow South Pasadena to sit at the table and protect themselves. So I don't know if you've thought about putting the, the weight of your three fine agencies behind the repeal of the Martinez bill, but I would certainly encourage you to do that. But I, at this point, cannot support the, the study because there's just way too many answers, and I think Greg's 100% right. It's incumbent upon you to come to us with the mitigating measures, and we're still waiting for the ones from 1969.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, sure.
Can I just answer? One of, like I said, originally, we said no trucks because we didn't really anticipate using interstate money. The interstate money, though, can, would enable us to make this a much bigger project and take care of some of the, if not all of the mitigating features you were talking about if we were able to get that federal money. So that's why it's sort of expanded to be able to fund making these, making these changes, because otherwise, it's going to be a long time before we come up with some ways to fund those changes.
Well, I like the mayor's idea of tunneling under La Cuenyada as well.
Well, you know, I, you know, and that's.
I think that's certainly something that should be looked at.
Could I just make one other question?
Yeah.
Mark, didn't I hear that, that this particular extension or closing of the gap is part of, what, did I hear the Eisenhower Interstate Project or something like that? And, and so no matter what we do, it is an interstate highway, so there will be trucks no matter what, period. Is that, is that not correct, or is that a misconception?
Yeah, no, the, the. Current record of decision for the four lane at grade freeway had anticipated excluding trucks from that particular section of the roadway. And so we weren't going to get the interstate money to be able to do that. That's a very significant portion. So it was, it would be specifically excluded from the Eisenhower system of defense highways in order to accomplish that.
Okay. Well, if there's no other comments, I, I would like to see if anyone from the public would like to make a comment. Mr. Margrave?
I didn't dress for the occasion because I wasn't in my space. So please excuse where I'm dressed. This is how I perform.
You want more of my coat?
Maybe it's high, if I may. My name's David Margrave. I live in South Pasadena. I served on council way back 25 years ago, and I've been recycled. I just got reelected, so I'm one of those three that we're talking about tonight. I want to assure you that the city of South Pasadena does not support the tunnel. What we did is we said that we would not object to the study. We do not believe that the city of South Pasadena is an island in any way, shape, or form. We are part of a community. La Cuenyada is part of that community. My son and I have played soccer in this city and around this area for many, many years. I continue to do that. I believe this is an extension of my community, and my community is an extension of yours. And our concerns are your concerns. I do not feel, and I believe no one in South Pasadena feels, that we should dig a hole and dump the problems on you. I want you, assure you that our concerns, if there is to be a freeway built, takes the concerns that you have addressed tonight. I would fear that we would separate the communities fighting amongst ourselves and tell, well, it's good for my community, let them worry about it. What I would not would like to see is a tunnel through South Pasadena, a tunnel through La Cuenyada, and dump the problem on someone, or dump the problems in Pasadena, or east of that. What I do know is that the study that has been put forth before us contemplates reducing traffic throughout the region, but bottlenecking Pasadena. The studies, MTA's own studies, the documents that we have received and the comments when I, at our council meeting, I addressed that concern, and it showed that the increased traffic coming through the 710 up to the, up to the 210 would complicate matters and in, in, cause more traffic concentrations at the 134 and the 210 and the 710. So we recognize that what's good for us does not necessarily mean good for you and good for your schools and the children around. So I want you to, I'm on record, and our council has gone on record, to not support the study, but rather allow the study to go forth without our objection. That's a far cry from what I believe has been proposed, and I want that to go on record and recognize that. And I appreciate you listening tonight and not being in a suit and tie, and next time I'll have a suit and tie. Thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'll happy to address them. I brought somebody with me that's been fighting the freeway longer than I, and I've been involved since 1969, and that's Joanna Knuckles, and I respect her view. If she have any questions, anything I've missed, she could straighten you out or straighten me out. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak?
Okay. I kind of wish we had this last week, because last week, we had our NVSSR study and discussion, and we had a number of people from the community who got up and talked about the fact that they can't have a conversation in their living room because the, the noise is so bad right now. But I think you'll just have to take the council's word that we do have a very serious problem here in La Cuenyada, and And it doesn't take another study to, you know, to tell us that it's going to get a whole lot worse when the gap gets closed. And it's for that reason that I cannot support the study at this point in time. I also feel that we have a limited number of dollars, and we ought to be looking to projects that we can put online faster to get trucks off the highways and cars off the highways. That isn't to say that we're not willing to talk about mitigation measures and concrete commitments in terms of addressing the problems, both the existing problem and the future. We are, we have open ears, but we have a problem here. And unless that's addressed, then we can't in good conscience say, "Make it a lot worse." But I'd like to thank you. Any other thoughts? I know it probably wasn't everything you wanted to hear, but I appreciate your willing to come and talk to us about it and taking times out of your busy schedules. And I hope that we can make progress in the future that advances both our interests.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Public safety update from the fire department. Lorraine? Thank you for your patience.
No problem.
Didn't know it would take quite that long.
That's all right.
That was an important discussion that we had to have.
Yes, it was. I used to work for the MTA, so I do know what kinds of studies and projects we worked on in the past. I'm going to be reporting on two months, October and November. And just a really quick announcement, our Assistant Fire Chief.